The Augusta, Georgia Planning Commission is a recommending body. The final decision on all zoning matters coming before it will be made by the Augusta Commission on September 16th, 2025 at 2:00 PM, Room 260 in the Municipal Building. The Planning Commission makes the final decision on all variances involving subdivisions and regulations. A handout describing the zoning procedures from which these cases are decided is available upon request. These procedures are required, also require that any applicant for a zoning action or any opponent to an application for a rezoning action who has made contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official within two years of the rezoning application to file a disclosure report with the governing authority. The disclosure report must be filed within 10 days, 10 calendar days of filing the application and at least 10 calendar days prior to today's hearing. A minimum of 10 minutes shall be afforded for the presentation of data, evidence, and opinions on each side of a rezoning petition or a special exception. If more than 10 minutes is afforded to a proponent or opponent, then an equal amount of time shall be afforded to the other side. The Commission encourages participation in this hearing, and there is no restriction on who may address the Commission within the allotted time. But the Commission asks that public comments be brief, on subject, non-repetitive, and directed to the Commission, not to an individual or group.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the first item on our agenda. All right, so we have Commissioner Rice join us via phone. The first item on our agenda, I need a motion to authorize the exit of the executive session from our August 4th, 2025 meeting.
Move to adjourn, Ms. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. And if we can move to execute the affidavit of compliance with the Open Records Act?
You want that included in the motion? Move to adjourn and compliance with the Open Records Act, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to exit the executive session and authorize the affidavit. All right, moving on to our next petition, item number 2Z-25-32.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission and staff, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Todd Kennedy with Planning and Development Services staff here to present this case. Case you have before you is Z number 25-32. The applicant seeks to rezone a .48 acre tract from agriculture, or Zone A agriculture, to R3A multiple-family residential to develop a fourplex located at 2223 Sullivan Road. The parcel currently is undeveloped land and situated in the Wilkinson Gardens neighborhood. Okay, just some information about the comprehensive plan consistency. According to the 2023 comprehensive plan, the property is located within the South Augusta character area. The vision for the South Augusta reflects a mix of housing types, preserving suburban-style single-family neighborhoods, while medium-density residential developments are added in a targeted manner to diversify the housing options as utility and transportation infrastructure improves. Okay, staff has provided some findings, a total of 15 findings. I will go through each of them for the record. Okay, number one, the property has 100 feet of road frontage along Sullivan. Number two, the property satisfies the minimum lot width of 80 feet as the property is 100 feet wide. Number three, the property satisfies the minimum square footage of 10,000 square feet as the total area of the property is 20,800 square feet. Number four, the conceptual site plan submitted with the application for the proposed fourplex shows that the proposed location of the structure will meet the required setbacks for the R3A zoning. Okay, number five, the conceptual site plan submitted with the, with the application shows that the entrance for the proposed fourplex will face Sullivan Road near the intersection of Hollis Road. Number six, R3A zoning requires 2.25 to 2.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit for a total of nine off-street parking spaces. The conceptual site plan only shows six parking spaces. A parking variance will be required should the developer not provide the necessary parking. Number seven, there are no sidewalks on Sullivan Road. Number eight, the property has access to public potable water and public sanitary sewer. Number nine, according to the FEMA flood insurance rate maps, or firm, the property is not located within a special flood hazard area. Number 10, according to the Augusta Richmond County GIS map layer, there are no wetlands located on the property. Number 11, according to the Georgia Department of Transportation State Functional Classification Map 2017, Sullivan Road is classified as a local road. Number 12, public transit is available to the east on Milledgeville Road, approximately 1,500 feet walking distance from the property, 1,500 feet or .28 miles. Number 13, most of the surrounding properties on this block are Zone R1A, one-family residential consisting of single-family homes ranging in size from approximately .24 acres to .46 acres. The parcels immediately east of the property are Zone R2, or two-family residential, and R3C, multiple-family residential respectively. Approximately 240 feet to the north along the south right-of-way line of ML King Boulevard properties are currently zoned B1, neighborhood business, and B2, general business. Number 14, the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the 2023 comprehensive plan. Number 15, at the time of the completion of this report, staff has not, have not received any inquiries regarding the petition as advertised. Okay, staff has received some comments. A comment has been received from the engineering department. A detention pond is required when submitting as a site plan. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my presentation. Both myself or staff and the applicant were here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? All right, ma'am, if you could come to the podium and give us your name, address, and any new details on your project.
Hi, I'm Raketa Clemmons. I am the owner of Home Investment Solutions LLC, which owns the lot in question. Address is the property address or my personal address?
Your address.
My home address is 16055 Harbor Hill Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina 28273.
Thank you. Is there any new, is there any additional details that you would like this Commission to be aware of?
Yeah, I own the property next door, which is also a multi-family unit. It's a triplex directly next door. So I own 2227 Sullivan Road as well. So I, the feedback that I have been given is that the local area has a lot of single-family homes, but due to that I do have a multifamily triplex next door, and on the other side of that property is another multifamily. I do feel like this would be an addition to the neighborhood. It is a square-looking home. It does not look like a commercial-type dwelling. It will look like a residential home. There's two units in the front and two units in the back. So honestly, from the road, it looks more like a duplex than anything. And I'll say for myself, I currently own two multifamily units in Augusta, Georgia. One, as I stated, is 2227 Sullivan, and then I have another triplex over on Lucky Street that I use, as well as kind of stated in some of the information that I provided, that I focus on low-income or affordable housing. Most of my units do go to, are supported by and go to families that use Section 8 housing vouchers. And so this would be an addition to that area as well. I think that's all I can think of right now. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Commissions, do you have questions of the petitioner? Okay, no seeing none. Anybody in the audience in opposition to this petition? Can't see a nun in the same way. Anybody support? All right, got one there. All right, staff recommendations.
Good afternoon. The Planning and Development staff recommends denial of the rezoning request. That concludes staff recommendation.
All right, Commissions, you have heard the...
Should staff approve, we do have some conditions. Should staff approves, the applicant should not provide the required additions to parking spaces, then they must obtain approval of parking variances prior to the submission of site plan review process. The applicant must submit a site plan that delineates a design and building materials that are both compatible and complementary to the existing single-family home within Wilkinson Garden neighborhood. The design and building materials must be approved by the Director of Planning and Development of their appointed destiny. Approval of this rezoning request does not constitute approval of the conceptual site plan submitted with the rezoning application. The proposed development shall obtain site plan approval and compliance with the site plan regulations of Augusta, Georgia, prior to construction commence on the propping. The development of the property shall comply with all development standards and regulations set forth by the City of Augusta, Richmond County, Georgia, as amended at the time of development. That concludes staff recommendation.
All right, Commissions, you've heard the staff recommendations. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve this with the conditions, Mr. Chair. Say that again.
Just a second. Commissioner Davis?
I agree with the recommendations.
Do you accept the recommendations if this body chooses to approve?
Yeah, I heard parking, which is fine. I wasn't aware that there was a minimum of nine, but parking is fine. I believe there's some... Okay, yeah. Yes, that's, I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Cook?
Move to approve with the additional conditions.
Properly moved and seconded to approve petition Z2532.
All in favor. Keep going, all in favor. Any opposed, say no. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Clemmons, your petition is being approved by the Planning Commission, so it'll be moved to the full commission. And when is that meeting? September 16th. September 16th, the full commission will consider this recommendation to approve.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's proceed.
Number three. Two? Number two. SE-25-11 petition by Dorinda Anna Apunaz requesting a special exception per section 26-1H of the comprehensive zoning ordinance to establish a family personal care home with six clients affecting property containing approximately 0.31 acres located at 3602 Abbey Road, Zone R-1A, one-family residence. Staff present.
Amanda Cruz, Planner 1. This special exception pertains to a 0.31 acre property located in the Barton Chapel Hills subdivision and is currently zoned R1A, one-family residential. The property features a one-story, 2,008 square foot residence that was constructed in 1972. The applicant is seeking approval of a special exception to establish a family personal care home with six clients on the property. The property is situated in the South Augusta character area. The 2023 comprehensive plan's vision for the South Augusta character area includes the continuation of mixed housing types at low to medium density to preserve the suburban-style single-family residential character that is predominant in this area. The applicant proposes to establish a family personal care home, providing care for six residents. The residence contains five bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, along with a living room, kitchen and dining room combo, laundry room, visiting area, and an office. No additions have been proposed at this time. The home will be operated by one staff member per shift, which will care for a maximum of the six clients. There are no other established family personal care homes within a 1,200-foot radius of the subject property. According to the Georgia Department of Transportation State Functional Classification Map of 2017, Abbey Road is classified as a local road, and Barton Chapel Road is classified as a minor arterial route. The nearest bus stop is located on Barton Chapel Road and is approximately 165 feet from the subject property. It's just right around the corner. Public water is present in the area, but public sewer is not. According to the FEMA flood insurance rate maps firm, the property is not located within a special flood hazard area. According to the Augusta Richmond County GIS map layer, there are no wetlands located on the property. The proposal is compatible with the surrounding land uses and is consistent with the 2023 comprehensive plan. And at the time of completion of this staff report, staff have received one individual in opposition regarding this application, and we received a letter in opposition, which is included in the packet. That concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? All right, ma'am, if you could come forward to the podium, give us your name, address, and any additional details on your project.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dorinda Inenapunza. I'm a pharmacist at Eisenhower Pharmacy, and my husband is also a nurse at Piedmont Hospital. Basically, we are healthcare workers with experience with over 15 years of experience in that industry, and we've worked with all age groups. However, we have most experience in the elderly population. We sought the need for this kind of businesses, business because this is what we've been doing all of our lives. We've been living here for over 10 years. Currently, knowing the, sorry, I'm nervous. With Eisenhower, you know, knowing the population of our veterans, and also with the VA and also with the hospital, we see, we see and take care of the elderly all the time, and that's why we went into this route to pursue this kind of business. When I did my research in terms of that specific area, it was a quiet area. There was a lot of elderly people living there already. And mind you, these people are our brothers, our sisters, our uncles, our aunties. So they're not weird or they're not, they are individuals just like us, just needing that extra care and that extra help. And as healthcare professionals, we are trained in terms of safety, in terms of taking good care of these kind of patients. So not only am I bringing that expertise, or my husband bringing that expertise on, in this field, but we also have that experience as a background also. So in a nutshell, that's about it.
Thank you. Commissions, do you have questions of the petitioner? Hold on, Commissioner Lewis, just a second. Commissioner Smith.
Have you met with the neighborhood?
So I asked a few people. I've walked around the neighborhood and asked a few people along the way, not specifically my neighbor.
Can we just refrain from comments from the audience? You guys will have an opportunity in just a second. Thank you.
Not, not specifically my neighbor, but like just driving around the street, I'll meet people and they say, oh, how's the, how's the neighborhood like? They'll say it's quiet, it's mostly elderly population, those kind of questions is how I went about asking people that I saw in the neighborhood.
But you didn't ask anybody, or you didn't present your plan to anybody in the neighborhood and ask if they had any opposition to that, have you?
No, I have not, sir.
Generally, it works better when you're trying to do something of this nature to meet with the community and explain what it is you want to do to avoid misconceptions or misunderstanding if you want to be part of that community, and it sounds like you're trying to be part of the community.
Yes, sir.
But as you can see, you have opposition here, and I think that it would have been very beneficial for you to have met with them previously to, to maybe quell some of their fears. But that was my only question, whether you had any engagement with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis.
So for a personal care home, basically, it's for the elderly who come in and basically have a room. We provide care as in, you know, cooking for them. Also, there is a home health agency that comes in and helps them with their medications, but mainly it's going to be their permanent stay, and also we're going to, basically just your everyday things, laundry, food, medicine, taking them to hospital, clinic visits and stuff like that. So just basically your everyday care. Yeah.
Additional questions from Commissions? All right, seeing none. Show of hands of the folks in the audience who are in opposition. Anybody in the audience in support of this petition? Okay, to the opposition, would you like to voice your concerns to this body? Do y'all have a spokesperson? All right, gentlemen, so you have a balance of 10 minutes. If you could make your comments directly to the Planning Commission, and before you speak, if you would give us your name and your address as well.
My name is Charles Carson, 2426 Frye Lane. I am the neighborhood president. At Forest, we didn't even know they was down there on the corner, and I have not seen anyone come around to address the matter to, to me or any other of the neighbors. I'm out in my yard every day in the evening times if I'm just walking around or cutting my grass. I would have liked to have met her before we had come here to talk about this and everything. And so we could have been on the same sheet of music. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Gaines. My address is 1445 Railroad Street. I own the property at 3604 Abbey Road, which is the next, next door to this property. I met the young lady and her husband probably back in May when this house went on the market for sale, and it was always my impression that they were residing in this, they're buying this property to actually live in, because the first thing that came out of their mouth was asking if the neighborhood was quiet. But one of the things I want to emphasize, I already wrote a letter, so you all probably read it, and I don't want to reiterate that again, but this is an existing neighborhood where most of the homeowners in this neighborhood still own their properties. So this isn't one of those neighborhoods where the property's changed over multiple times. It's an existing, older community, quiet, and we don't want this type of attention in the community. And I will tell you that already Barton Chapel Hills Road is already busy enough. I mean, it's like getting on the interstate, coming out of the subdivision, because they just fly down that street. And so she wants to put six people into this particular property? No, I'm in total disagreement with this, not to mention the property value as well that we are also concerned. I don't want to have to come out of the particular property and see all of this attention going over here. So we're just totally in disagreement. I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Okay, I'm Barbara Pulliam. I live at 2418 Frye Court, and basically I agree with what has been said, but what I want to emphasize even more is the fact of a care home that's on a hill, and I don't call it, I call it the expressway. It's going to be darn near impossible to get out and for any medical stuff to come in. It is not, if you were looking for a care home, it's the wrong place. I'm against it, but you definitely got the wrong place because if you cared about the people you putting in there, I don't think I'd put them on a hill where you can't get out on the expressway and you have to wait 20 to 25 minutes to get out on there. And they know that story because we've been down here before. That light, we need a light. But I just hope it's, it's not a good place, and we're against it.
Thank you, Ms. Pulliam.
Good afternoon. My name is Corinthia Newsen-Davis. I'm here on behalf of my mother, who's unable to be here at the time. 3603 Watergate Drive. I'm here on behalf of my mother, who's unable to be here at the time, 3603 Watergate Drive, off of the back, I mean, off of, uh, Barton Chapel Road. I think everyone has already pretty much established why we don't want it or don't need it in that area. I applaud you for what you're doing for personal care homes, but not in that area. And I always ask this...
Excuse me, Ms. Davis, if you could just make your comments directly to us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you so very much.
Forgive me. Um, my concern is if you're going to put a personal care home in anyone's area or residential area, you have to ask yourself, would I put it in mine? And if the answer is no, then the answer here is no.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, we will bring the, um, opposing comments to a close. Um, let's hear from the staff, staff recommendations.
The planning and development staff recommends approval of the special exception to establish a family personal care home with the following conditions. The home shall be limited to no more than six residents with full supervision. Any living staff will, will be counted towards a maximum occupancy of home, of the home. Successful completion of a code enforcement inspection is required before insurance of the business license. The applicant must receive a City of Augusta business license and continue to maintain a license with the State of Georgia, proof of compliance with the minimum requirements of Chapter 290 dash 2 dash 5 dash 18 of the OCGA must be provided, and the advocate must provide an annual inspection report. The home shall be staffed and maintained in compliance with all State Department of Community Health regulation for a family personal care home. No signage is permitted on the property. This concludes staff recommendation.
Ma'am, would you, um, accept those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, commissioners, you've heard the staff recommendations. Chair will entertain a motion. You got a question, Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, um, this is for our staff, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I would like to get a clarification on exactly why this commission and this body cannot deny this. If our legal, um, it, well, you, if you'll give us your legal opinion as to why we cannot deny it, so that the people came down here expecting, uh, some satisfaction from this board will understand that we are tied and have no, uh, no way to deny this. I'd like to, I'd like for you to put that on the record, please, ma'am.
There's not that you can't deny it, you can deny it, but if you deny it, we may be in a lawsuit. Um, there are special protections for personal care homes. Um, they are to be considered, um, residential, so they are within the character nature of the, um, area, which is why, um, staff recommended approval. They also have protections for, uh, the individuals that are, you cannot make a determination based on how able you think the person is that is inside of the home. The determination, if you decided not to, would need to be a concrete reason why, um, specific, there's not enough room in the home, something that is very concrete and defendable. That was my advice, and that is the reason I recommend that you approve also with staff.
And that's, I simply wanted that on the record so that you good people that came down here would understand the position that we're in, and quite frankly, I agree with you wholeheartedly, uh, but I want you to understand the legal obligation that has been put upon us by our lawyers who represent the city. Um, so I want you to understand where, where at least I come from. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'll tell you where I come from. Thank you.
Commissioner Prince?
Uh, Commissioner, I was wondering, could we table this till next month to where the petitioner has a chance to meet with the neighborhood, at least to be able, as he said, to be on the same page of music, so that they can understand what is going on and what she proposes to do in the neighborhood?
Is that a motion?
Could I say one other thing? So that they would have a chance to figure out a way that would make it acceptable for them to have this in their neighborhood, because there might be some, some additional conditions that would, would bring them into agreement here, so I think, I think postpone it for 30 days.
So to the petitioner, would you be receptive to postponing this to a, um, future meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
Y'all make a motion that we postpone it for 30 days?
Second.
It has been properly seconded to postpone this petition for 30 days?
Mr. Chairman, could we, um, uh, ask someone to set up a meeting so that she can meet with the neighborhood, so that they can be informed of what's going on?
Yeah, I'm sure the planning staff can facilitate that meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, so there was a motion for... President, right? She can meet with the president of Barton Chapel. They can talk afterwards. So we have a motion to postpone special exception 2511 into our, what's next one? October meeting? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Thank you.
Good, you got it. The result, that it passed. Okay. All right, so the recommendation to postpone is passed. All right, so thank you. Um, between the planning staff and the neighborhood representative, um, there'd be a meeting facilitated so that you can have some discussion with the neighborhood, with the individuals in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from the legal session? I need a motion to approve the minutes from the August 4th meeting.
Make a motion that we approve?
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the August me... Meeting minutes. All in favor? All right, motion to adjourn?
Approve.
All right, all in favor?